Oh, I'm good.
Welcome.
Yeah. Yeah.
Such a big hit.
Okay. Okay. Was it O B, O C D?
That's a couple of times. We're good? What do you mean, going to the line? Oh, you mean, want me to go over? It's complicated. It's not, yeah, it's just complicated.
The meeting has come to order. I'm on. Yeah. Sorry for the delay. We had just had other things to do. And the first order of business is the agenda approval. We have to make an amendment to that to remove item 10 and and to make a motion to approve item 7. End the agenda.
What? Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as revised to delete item 10.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And moved and seconded that the agenda be approved as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next item of business is item number two, which is report on the closed session.
The board met in closed session to confer with its real property negotiator. That was closed session agenda item one. No action was taken. Action may be taken in open session under agenda item six. The board also met with legal counsel concerning pending litigation. And that's item two on the closed session agenda. And the board did authorize an increased offer with regard to the McDonald property. The third item in closed session was a meeting with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. The board did authorize an increased offer on the Culberth Ainsley parcel. No action was taken in closed session with regard to the Kubo and Arunya Kasim parcel. Action may be taken on those under agenda items eight and nine in the open session.
I need a, a motion to approve the public comment, yeah. Open for a public comment on matters not on the agenda.
Yep.
Okay. There being none, we'll move on down. Approval of the October the 29th, 2015 minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the October 29th, 2015 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Review the monthly year-to-date revenue and expenses.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. This cash flow report, monthly cash flow report, is for September 2015. The agency started the month off with a balance of $14.6 million. No revenue was received for the month. And administration expenditures totaled approximately $52,000. Project expenses, which occurred in the North Area projects for real estate closeout and project closeout and monitoring. We also had expenses on the G R R and R F M P. The majority of expenses, though, were for the Southport project, where we had approximately a half a million dollars expended for design and real estate support and approximately $800,000 in real estate, capital real estate acquisition and relocation cost. The agency expenses, expenses for the month totaled $1.5 million approximately. And the agency's ending position for the month was approximately $13 million. The agency is getting closer to receiving its amended funding agreement. It's emerged from Department of General Services, is now back with D W R, so we'll get some more concise progress on it. Greg will have some more details on what we can expect in the near future with that. And next month, we plan to start briefing the board on the Southport cash model, the going forward, rather than just reporting on past months, so that the board will have a better picture of how the cash flow looks to be managing going forward. And with that, that ends the cash flow report for the month.
So our starting balance next month is probably going to be about the $13 million figure?
Yeah, that will be for October. As of today, our balance, our actual balance was about 11.5.
Okay.
Yeah. That's going up to mid-November.
No, no comments, hurry up, Steve.
The next item is the
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
And I would move for
Any questions on the consent agenda?
No questions. I would just make a motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Go.
Hold on, I'm looking at seven. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the consent agenda be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Let's see.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Barely on here.
Public hearing.
Yep.
Want to open item number seven for
Item number eight.
Item number eight for public comment. Consideration of resolution 15-1102.
Morning, President Denton, members of the West Africa Board. Today, I'm going to be presenting two resolutions of necessity for your consideration for the South Sacramento River, Southport early implementation project. I'll discuss the goals of the Southport project as I have previously. I'll provide a brief overview of how we came to this point to advance the project to its current design at 90 percent. And then I'll, I'll present the information necessary to make the required findings for a resolution of necessity. So as I've stated before, first and foremost, the Southport E I P project is a public safety project. It's consistent with West Africa's overarching goals to provide 200-year flood protection to the city, its residents and businesses, and do so with causing the least amount of harm to private property. It is our intention, we have designed and we are going to construct a project to achieve 200-year flood protection that maximizes the use of local resources. So in 2008, we completed, completed a preliminary, excuse me, a problem identification report. That was followed by an alternatives analysis that was developed to analyze known deficiencies and proposed potential solutions. And through that process, the Southport project was chosen in 2011 to address significant seepage deficiencies along the Sacramento River. In 2011, a preliminary design report was completed, which analyzed deficiencies and solutions to address those deficiencies. Since that final preliminary design report, the levy design has advanced from 15 percent to 60 percent to 90 percent complete, moving towards 100 percent before the end of, by the end of the calendar year. As you know, Village Parkway was part of this as an alternative access road since South River Road will be demolished. That process is already underway. There's construction fencing up. Clearing and grubbing has occurred throughout the alignment for south of Linden. And the project team anticipates that we'll be going out to bid for the levy project early next year. So prior to the preliminary design report being completed, staff presented a design decision hierarchy for your consideration, which walks us through step-by-step a methodical process to actually determine how to get to what is the best design. One that assemble solution that solves the problems, that minimizes impacts and maximizes benefits. So we went through a number of controlled measure alternatives. So there was, excuse me. There was an adjacent levy alternative, some with cutoff walls. There was a setback levy alternative with berms throughout the entire reach with a partial levy degrade. And then there was a third combined measure alternative that include fix-in-place at the tails with, fix-in-place with a cutoff wall and a fix-in-place with levy with berms. The team, as these, as these designs went to 15 percent design, a team presented two guiding principles to help to select, to help the board select a preferred design alternative. One was to develop a project that provides the greatest amount of protection to the city as soon as possible and considering the, considering that first objective to also minimize the effects on the community overall. The combined measured alternative with adjacent levy with seepage berms, setback levy with seepage berms, and fix-in-place with seepage berms designs were assembled to produce two final design alternatives. Both of them were advanced to 15 percent complete. And at this West Africa Board meeting in January 2013, the team presented the design alternatives included various solutions to address the issues. The first alternative included fix-in-place repairs with conventional cutoff wall in segment A and B in the southern end of the project and combine the setback levy beginning in segment B all the way and behind Bee's Lake with an adjacent levy in seepage berm through segment F and an adjacent levy with cutoff walls in segment G. Alternative two consisted of the same solutions for five of the seven reaches, but segments B and F solution set back the levy. The board approved advancing segments A through G where the flood risk reduction solutions were common to both alternatives. Furthermore, the board charged the team with completing value engineering segments for, value engineering studies for segments F and B, which were completed in 2012. And based on the feasibility of the measures evaluated, the impacts of private property, the cost effectiveness, and the ability to maximize flood protection for Southport, the board directed the project team to integrate the preferred, preferred design alternative into the project design for segments B and F. There are four findings that are necessary for you to make to pass a resolution of necessity. First, that the public interest of the, public interest and necessity for the proposed project. Second, that the project is planned and located in a manner that's most compatible with the greatest amount of public good and the least private harm. The property is necessary for the project and the offer has to have been made to the owner of record. In regards to the first finding, the Sacramento E I, the Southport E I P project is along the western shore of the Sacramento River, just south of the deep water ship, excuse me, just south of the Barge Canal and going all the way to the city's southern limits. The design that we, has been developed will provide 200-year flood protection, meeting state standards as well as federal standards, and will protect over 50,000 people and $4 billion in community assets. Without the proposed project improvements, residents and businesses continue to be at risk during a major storm event. The second finding, that the proposed project is planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. So I've already described where it's located. We've gone through a number of analyses to determine how much area was necessary for this alternative, taking into consideration public safety, local resources, as well as the need to fix known deficiencies along Southport. The design selection was deliberative and considered, like I said, public safety, engineering requirements and constraints of the impacts of private property, community fiscal effects, as well as our ability to provide the greatest amount of good with the least amount of public harm. The property is necessary for the project. For in this particular case, we're talking about the property that's owned by Richard and Ann Kubo, just by the, where Gregory and the Railroad Trussell is. Their property is approximately nine acres in size and located in segment B, just downstream from where the levy will transition from a strengthen-in-place to a setback levy. .86 acres of the property is needed for levy improvements, including the levy and an O and M corridor, as you can see on the, the right-hand part of the exhibit. .61 acres is needed for utility easement that runs along the, it's hard to tell from here, but it's not really the eastern border of the, the top of the property, as well as a .12 acres is needed for temporary construction easement to construct a cul-de-sac at that portion of South River Road. The West Africa Board approved the acquisition at the May meeting this past, this year. A complete offer package was organized, assembled, and sent by Federal Express to Mrs. Kubo and, for the, Mr. and Mrs. Kubo for the property acquisition. That happened on June 10th. There have been numerous attempts to reach the Kubos and enter into discussions. The Kubos have, have shown that they, excuse me, have, are represented by legal counsel. There's been numerous attempts to also reach them, and they have been unresponsive. So that's where we are today. We feel that we are in an impasse, and which is why this resolution is before you today. That concludes my presentation on, on resolution 151102.
Okay. It's now open for public comment on item number eight. There being none. I need a motion.
Ballot and close the hearing, close the
Oh, we'll close the, the public session. We need a motion on number eight then.
I would then, I'd go ahead and make the, the motion for approval of resolution 1511-02 to acquire real property through eminent domain action, parcel 046260032-000.
Second it.
Been moved and seconded that the motion for approval of 15-11-02. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine. Presentation by staff.
So this is resolution 1511-03. This is the second resolution necessity for your, for your consideration. I'm just going to reiterate the findings necessary to, to make the, for the, for the resolution, and then we can move forward. So again, public interest and necessity for the proposed project. We've already talked about the, so this is a 5.6-mile improvement project. It is designed to address deficiencies in Southport along the Sacramento River. It will provide 200-year flood protection. And without these improvements, residents and the community continues to be at risk of it during a major storm event. It's located in a manner that's compatible with the greatest public good and the least private industry, injury. As you know, there is significant erosion along the area of the riverbank. Levy deficiencies include underseepage, stability, and geometry issues. The project team evaluated a number of alternatives in order to achieve a 200-year flood protection for the city. And this design selection and was deliberative and considered public safety, engineering requirements and constraints, community, local efforts, as well as West Africa's ability to provide the greatest benefits to, with existing resources. In this particular case, the property that we're speaking about is owned by Vishay Arunyakasim. It's approximately five acres in size and located in segment B. As can be seen from this exhibit, the entire parcel will become part of the setback area of the proposed project. The setback levy is landward of the parcel in question. We also have to demonstrate that we've made an offer. The West Africa Board approved an offer to Mr. Arunyakasim in March. A written offer was assembled following the approval by the board and was presented to Mr. Arunyakasim in person on April 21st, 2015. There's been ongoing discussions with Mr. Arunyakasim. He has attained his own appraisal, and the board considered it administrative settlement for the property in September. A counteroffer settlement was provided to the property owner, but at this time it was refused. That's why we're here today for resolution 1511-03. Please open the public hearing, and we can continue.
Thank you. Open item number nine for public hearing. Nobody has any comments? Close public hearing. Need a motion on item number nine.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we, excuse me, we adopt resolution 1511-03.
And I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt resolution 15-11-03. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 10.
That was, that was
Say need a motion to
That was removed.
Pardon?
That was removed. So we're down to
It was removed.
Oh, yeah, we took care of it, yeah, we took care of that. Down to West Africa project updates.
Morning, President Denton, members of the board. In your packet, there's the flood protection progress report. I'll go through a number of the items. Some of the information's changed just a little bit, and I have other ones I'd like to call some attention to. On the state funding agreements, as you know, we have two funding agreements for Southport, both early implementation funds, project funds, as well as the U F R funding. On the early implementation, early implementation project funds, we got some news from D W R earlier this week that the construction funding agreement has returned from the Department of General Services and is being fully executed by D W R this week. And what that means for us is that we should, in the near future, within the next 60 days or so, be looking at a true-up payment that from, as we're shifting from the design of the Southport project to construction, we're going to move to the new higher cost share. So we'll be looking to get a true-up payment from D W R, and that looks to be on the order of about eight and a half million dollars. So that should be coming in the next 60 or so days. And then also, as we've executed the construction funding agreement, we're looking at between closeout of the design funding agreement and outstanding invoices already processed by the state under the new construction funding agreement, an additional about 4.5 million dollars or so coming maybe in the next 90 days or so. So that's good news for our cash flow. And then we'll also be submitting to D W R our request for advanced funding for both Village Parkway and, following on the heels of that after the first of the year, we'll be sending in a request for advanced funding for the construction of the levy improvements. So those will also be coming in the near future.
On the true-ups, is that both the eight-point something million dollars and the five-point something million dollars? Is that for both?
The eight and a half is for true-up, to go from the 50 percent cost center design to the construction funding agreement cost share, which is roughly around averaging 78 percent or so. And then the 4.2 million is, like, release of retention from the design funding agreement as we close that out. And then we also have outstanding invoices right now through, like, June of 2015 that the state just hasn't finished processing yet. Now that the construction funding agreement's executed, they now have the funds to, to pay their, their portion of the cost share for the, the recent invoices, so.
So it looks like the city's going, or the flood agency's going to get probably about 13, 14 million dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
About that. And then we did also received earlier this week a request for, for some additional information from D W R on our U F R funding application. We're in the process of providing some responses. There weren't many, many questions. We're providing those responses hopefully by the end of the week. And then that will then support D W R processing the decision memo so we can fund the remainder of the, of the project. Under the Southport project, a couple of significant milestones. On November 6th, the Army Corps District staff submitted the 408 permit application to Division for review. That's the first of two steps to get it to, get it to headquarters for review and approval. So that was good news. That also included the draft record decision for the final E I S. That also included the draft record decision for the final EIS, so that's also moving. We do have one outstanding comment on the final EIS, which is a modification to the description of the cumulative impacts for cultural resources, but that will not be incorporated into the final EIS. So, it'll be amended or appended to the record decision as an errata sheet. So, it's still processing for review. Also last week, the SHPO, the Corps, and West Safka executed the programmatic agreement for the Cultural Resources Consultation, Section 106. So, that was executed last week. That was also good news. For the Southport project, the Center Valley Flood Protection Board has, this is under utility relocation, Center Valley Flood Protection Board permit application for the PG&E utility relocation work has been accepted and that application is now being reviewed by the Army Corps for concurrence. Also, under utility relocation, some additional information on the cell tower, that permit for relocation of the cell tower was approved and the grading work for the relocation of the cell tower is scheduled to start next week. The Village Parkway improvements, as the board is aware, that construction contract was awarded, the first working day was October 19th. And the construction operations that are currently being undertaken include clearing and grubbing, silt fence installation, temporary construction entrances, and construction yard installation. So, if you haven't been out, perhaps you can take a look at the progress to date by driving along the Southport levy. Seeing progress in our project out there. On the general reevaluation report, so the final draft report and the read-ahead package was submitted both electronically and hard copies to headquarters on October 12th. And we are currently, West Safka staff is currently working alongside Department of Water Resources staff, as well as Center Valley Flood Protection Board staff and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers staff on the, finalizing the presentation and the slides for that presentation for the Civil Works Review Board, scheduled for December 8.
Not September. No, that's narrow.
On the Rivers Erosion Project site, that work is now complete. The last working day was October 15 and staff is working on project closeout documentation. And then on the South Cross Levy certification, the formal package to request that the South Cross Levy be included in the PL 8499 program with the Corps was submitted last week. So, we're looking for them to make that determination in the near future. And then lastly, what I'd like to report out on, and I'm going to turn this over to Crocker and Crocker to do a brief presentation, under Public Relations Activities for a summary of the California Flood Preparedness Week activities. So, I think Lucy's going to introduce Justina. And there's a brief PowerPoint presentation to kind of highlight the activities of that
Good morning Chairman, Ms. on, good morning Chairman Denton and members of the board. So, I wanted to just kick off the presentation that we're going to give to you about the highlights of Flood Preparedness Week. So, West Sacramento has set the bar for the last two years on Flood Preparedness Week and the activities that have surrounded that. And your outreach programs have been just excellent on school outreach. This year took it another step further and you're going to see the highlights of that and everything that took place. We continue to heavily partner with the Washington Unified School Districts and your funding partners from the Department of Water Resources and the Army Corps of Engineers. So, my firm's project manager, Justina Janis, is going to talk about the highlights of how we carry the Plan, Pack, Protect program further. And the best messengers that I think that you can have are first through fourth graders and they were so excited about the program this year and they take the messages and everything that they've learned back to their parents, their other siblings, and talk about it at home. I've been doing public outreach for 25 years and there was a first in West Sacramento this year when the high schoolers wrote about this program that took place in their school newspaper. I think it's called Our City Voice. And actually, rather than the news release that was written about this program being picked up by the News Ledger, the News Ledger actually ran the Our City Voice article in the News Ledger rather than the, the news release. So, it was very awesome to see how everything's running, going from one vehicle to the other. So, it was really fun to see that happen. So, I'm going to turn the PowerPoint over to Justina Janis. She's the project manager that made everything happen and you'll get to see the highlights of what took place this year.
Thank you.
Thank you Lucy and thank you for having me. So, I'm going to give you a little more information on our Flood Preparedness Week activities. Like Lucy said, we really focused on our partnership with the Washington Unified School District. They've been super helpful and super excited about really getting involved with West Sac Flood Protect. And so, the three activities we really focused on were the kickoff news conference and then the new educational flood challenge computer game, as well as the annual poster design See if I can figure out how to use this. The rollerball. There you go. So, with the help of Mayor Cobaldan, Darren Soon with the Department of Water Resources, and Rachel Oriana with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, we kicked off Flood Preparedness Week at Southport Elementary School on October 19th. Over 40 students attended the event, as well as parents, staff, PTO members, the district superintendent, project partners, and the media. After the presentation by the mayor and our flood experts, the students got to debut the new flood challenge computer game, which I'll talk about later. And they also participated in a coloring activity that included flood preparedness educational information as well. And they took part in a flood table exercise. Overall, the event was a great success and it really helped educate the community and get all that great information to the students so they can then go home and talk to their families about their flood preparedness plans. We had a really great turnout for the media. The news conference was received by three news stations, three print publications, and two radio stations, as well as, as well as other online resources. Coverage of the event was aired 10 times on TV news. So, it played the evening of the event as well as the morning after the event. The event was also featured on the front page of the West Sacramento Sun, as well as the News Ledger. And like Lucy said, the River City High School students actually wrote about the event and featured it in their newspaper. KFBK and Capitol Public Radio shared the story on their social media, as well as their website. And there was flood preparedness information included on westsacweb.com, the city highlights, and the Southport Elementary School website. And so, all this coverage just really elevates West Sac Flood Protect's commitment to the community and residents and just getting out all this great information to make sure they understand the importance of flood preparedness. Another strong component of Flood Preparedness Week was all of the social media shares we received. So, we got 45 shares on Twitter and Facebook and for a local event, that's actually a really substantial amount. It was shared by the mayor, Department of Water Resources, the city, the Washington Unified School District, the Delta Council, the Southport Elementary, PTO, and parents. And also, the Public Agency of Risk Managers Association, they caught on to that and shared our information, which was really great. So, this spread the information to an even larger audience and promoted the microsite westsacfloodprotect.com and also just gave more flood preparedness tips out to the community. So, the super exciting feature of this year's Flood Preparedness Week was the new educational flood challenge game. And this is for grades one through four and it was launched at the news conference. It's a community-based social marketing program, which really focuses on a proclamation and encouraging behavior change. So, it focused on the three key flood preparedness actions, which are plan, pack, and protect. And the three characters are Petra the Planner, Pedro the Packer, and Polly the Protector, as you can see up there on the certificate. And they were created based on West Sacramento's demographics and they lead these students through the game in each level. The first level focuses on creating a flood preparedness binder. This includes important information like phone numbers, your flood insurance policy, things like that. The second level focuses on the importance of having an emergency kit. So, you'd have your water, your batteries, flashlights, first aid kit. And the final game focuses on protecting your home. And so, that has of course the flood insurance message, but for students, that's a little difficult to understand. So, we used a sandbag activity that would help in the case of localized flooding. The game, game ends with that proclamation to plan, pack, protect, and to go home to their families and talk to them about their emergency plan and flood insurance. The flood challenge game has been very successful in its first week at, or first month, excuse me, at the Washington Unified School District. It's available to all seven elementary schools and it's also used in their after-school programs. And we've also had interest from other agencies about the game and possibly using it for their future programs. In our last activity for Flood Preparedness Week is our poster contest. So, we're currently receiving all of the entries right now and we'll have some of the best ones to display for you at the end of the month. And so, the winners will then be honored at a future city council meeting. And we also distributed informational packets of information and website and newsletter copy to all the elementary schools so that they could also feature that information in their newsletters or websites. So, that's kind of the overview of Flood Preparedness Week. Are there any questions?
Very good job.
Thank you.
Very good job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. Heard, no, that's all, go sit down. The, the presentation, I think, was very well received and heard a lot of very nice comments and this is something that is sort of innovative for West Sacramento. We haven't really done a lot of this kind of stuff in the past. And the kids just got a real kick out of it. And so, I've heard from teachers and parents and even some kids that this is really a very good way to sort of kick off flood protection, to just get flood protection in, on the radar screen, so to speak. And I just want to thank you guys. You did a great job. Really did well.
Meetings adjourned.